We'll call a meeting to order. County Commissioners Court is in a regular meeting, December 27, 2016. It is 9:30 AM. Make note that this meeting was published and posted in the manner for the time required. But all members of the court present. If it's convenient, please stand. The District Court will leave under implication.
That's right. Our Heavenly Father, we so thank you for this day. We ask that you be with the men and women overseas. We ask that you be with ones, people who have lost loved ones. We ask that you be with the sick and heal and make them feel better. We ask that you watch over us and help and guide and direct us to do things that's good for the county and now to you. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the good republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I've got number three, public comments, announcements, and presentations. I've got added one that didn't get on the agenda that is sent out. That's the part release, their press release where we have received confirmation that it did pass muster and SOS Secretary of State or his assistant did put his signature on that, so it is approved, verity is proved, and we have the delivery date, I think, of January 3 for our equipment. And I believe that I sent the press release also to the media. Everybody's aware of that. The weather will be good, and we'll receive those pieces of equipment on the 3rd of January 30. And this form, a note probably would request some of you, if you can, be up there with those things in and out. I don't know if they'll go back, the old machines will go back on the same load? Maybe they will.
Be a good idea if they were.
I expect them to be here probably a little after lunch, around lunchtime.
What day?
Yeah. On the 3rd, January 3rd.
Get my guys here and meet here pretty fast. Will you put out a, will you just have this one?
Yeah, yeah. We're getting those.
Do you have a, what's the schedule for this, for our again on the 3rd?
2:00 PM.
2:00?
If that's comfortable for everybody.
2:00?
It's on Sunday, the 1st, 2:00 PM. And right here, County Court.
Basically, we have y'all's bonds. If you would get with Sherri, if you have time, go ahead and sign off. We'll get that done. Get your bond signed and noted right there.
I think they're in the, yeah, we've got several on here.
Bond type.
Bond type.
Also, on non-action item, we have Cheryl's bond, bond from County Governor, which is to the district judge and approved by the district judge. If we want to get it here, we will have registered it on our file. And also Nancy Thomas came and offered her certificate at C E U's. I think that's 37 and a half hours. I understand that's what you said. Is that correct? Okay. So we have her certificate also in this public comments, announcements, and presentations to be recorded as an exhibit in these meetings. Congratulations Nancy on her. Sounds like she must be a very intelligent woman.
She's been educated to the highest degree.
Was there anything in that 37 and a half hours that you had not seen before?
Is there anything else that we need to bring to the attention of the court? Or anybody out there have any announcements to make? Now we'll move on to county item number four, county clerk's minutes of previous meeting, December 12, 2016. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections need to be made? I think the clerk must go one slide there that she's already corrected.
What's the correction?
I have motion by Commissioner Wiley and second by Commissioner Sykes to approve those minutes as presented, all in favor. Carried by.
Several things to talk to. Do I have them going in?
You can just stand up here as long as you may.
Okay. Vouchers today total is $427,847.96. Out of the general, it's $353,183.29.
We're going to pick it.
We have, yes, I finally paid the net debt of maintenance, which is over $100,000, and some other big ticket, but we did get some tax money. So before we pay these, we had $82,000 in the general.
Something else in there that Stacy and I was discussing with her in there is the electric bill for the AgBarn.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about electric bill right away on this thing.
Oh, really?
That's something else.
Yeah.
Voucher, if I could do that, would you approve them or you would do it all?
Do I have a motion to, about the paper?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wiley and second by Commissioner Sykes to approve that payable as presented, all in favor. Carried by.
On the AgBarn, I have a couple of electric bills now, one for the rodeo fairgrounds that we pay and one for the AgBarn out here. The one for the rodeo grounds is $578.11, and the one in Bill to AgBarn is $313.93. And I have $571 in the bank in the AgBarn account. And these are in our name, and I've talked to Judge Bullock, and we think according to that contract, the city's supposed to be paying the electric now. So what I want to do is get enough money in there to pay these, and then I'm going to build a city for them.
That's the reversals.
Yes, sir. And I don't know, maybe I should ask to reimburse the ones we paid last month.
Yes, yes, we do.
Wasn't our agreement started on the 3rd of October?
Yeah.
Anything since the 1st of October?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll copy you on that later, so.
Are they still using the old facility out here?
Yes, they are.
Obviously, they're using those rodeo grounds.
Out of the rodeo ground?
Because that bill, I mean, it had been, it has been $170.
$500? I don't care if you use a heat lamp, they don't pull that much electricity.
Well, electricity's been billed at 25 cents.
Well, that's only, now see here it says.
It's not on the contract, is it?
On here it says 11 cents on the bill that I have coming up, but now out here it says 9.4. That's an average with all of your costs involved, your demand charge and all that.
9.4 cents?
9.4 and 11.0 with AgBarn.
You know, when we went in all of those, this facility was going to be up and running prior to the beginning of stock shilling, and they were going to house animals in it. They ran behind. I think all of the property has already been transferred and all even including the old A little bit under the impression that the utility bills there probably should be being picked up by someone else also.
Okay. So anything out there?
You know, whether it's city or school districts.
I agree.
There's another county, however, we should.
Well, we signed over, when we signed over that land, we signed over our rights.
We shouldn't have.
And we shouldn't, we shouldn't be paying anything else on any of that.
We'll get that contract set down. Let's look at the bills since October 1st, and we'll fix up.
I know, I know that the agreement, Council Call included, had anything to do with the old facility, but it's already, you know, we've already passed muster on that. It's, you know, it's somebody else's, it should be this one, the contract that we signed with them regarding the old AgBarn facility down here, that they wouldn't pick up the electricity bill on that.
So that's over $800 worth of electricity that's gone?
Yes. And like I say, it's in our name. We do have to pay it and getting reimbursed and everything, but it should, they should reimburse. But I'd like to move some money into that AgBarn account out of contingency.
Where do you find it?
I mean, if we want, and Ann had suggested $2,000, because we are going to have to keep paying it and get reimbursed, and I know what they, they're not real speedy.
Why don't we, why don't we?
They're not asking about reimbursement.
Well, we go ahead and get the, get the electricity put back into their name and let them take the share of the bill instead of going through us.
Yeah.
They're sharing about doing that.
Well, but after they move the things out there, it's going to be back to.
I mean, if they'll reimburse, I don't mind having to do it this way. If they'll reimburse until they get that other finished.
I say, well, let's try it this time and see how it works. If it don't work very well, then we'll go to plan B.
Thank you. Kind of owe that percent to their reimbursement. Make note of that.
Okay.
Over that percent.
So we just, do we want to know just enough? Now, the gas bill, we never talked about the gas. I think we have a $50 gas bill too out there, so.
And we're still living there? Out there at the AgBarn?
That's probably just a minimum charge.
It is, it's very low. I think we should move to $2,000, and when we get it back, or receive it back into the general, we want to receive it back in the AgBarn.
Okay. One more question, move $2,000.
To AgBarn. And what I do is there is, it's a separate checking account. I'll write a check out of contingency and Ann will take care of the rest.
I'll serve the rest.
We can seriously consider having disposed of the bill.
They certainly do.
Dynamite?
Let somebody else be responsible. We have a motion by Commissioner Pruitt, second by Commissioner Wiley to allow $2,000 to be moved from the contingency to the AgBarn if necessary. Okay. All in favor? Carried by. And, you know, we've been around and around that building down there. It was suggested when we were talking about it seriously about a year ago, you know, that we divested our sales from that facility back to the City Ground, paper, paper. Get rid of that, turn it down, disassemble it, sell it, be disassembled or whatever. You know, I think that's what their intent was then. Now, that might have changed, so I don't know.
What if, what if we took a bid or something like that for that building to be removed from that location?
What part of the, we own just?
Oh, we own the building.
The metal and the?
We own the structure. Just to be removed. And see if we can get somebody reputable that would take and move it.
Is it, is it possible we could utilize that building? Justin Rogers continues to exclaim to me that that building is, the purpose it's serving right now is a purpose he would like to see continue to service, but it's because it does it so well. And he thinks that he can keep it full of projects, even with the new projects there out there, so. Is there any way we could gift it to an organization that'd be responsible for it?
Would the Grand Industrial Board be interested in that?
I don't want to pay the bills on it.
Yeah, that's, we, oh, that'd be the.
I mean, look at the bills, sometimes they're.
I mean, it's been, it's been in their name before, really. The livestock committee, is there still livestock committee?
Yes.
Is there? Oh, the chain. What, the chain? Were you talking about the chain?
He said the chain.
No, no, I said, see if the Grand Industrial Board would.
They'd move the property that would. Well, that seems gone.
And the property's city.
Economic development corporation.
That's here, out here now.
We want to give a city a contingency that they can give to the board.
There you go. Just like we did the active center.
Or taking moving out there, or the other, other way it is out there.
I'm sure the, I'm sure the back part of that building will be moved, the barn part and that, the other part probably can be, not directly moved. But I know that the original, well, I guess it's original, I guess it's that part really. Not the original part, just the barn facility.
They just asked me, I just told them to contact Justin or, I had somebody just contacted Wiley on asking about flipping their pigs in there.
Inside.
Inside the barn.
And pull over for.
I told them to contact Justin or Miranda.
The buildings?
Our agreement is only for the shelter on the south, on the south side. I've seen. That's all I'm saying, if I don't have a problem with that. That's right.
But I did with Miranda and Justin, let them.
That's, that's what I told them to do. Yeah, they're willing to take responsibility for it, or willing to allow them to do it.
I wouldn't know that.
That's good.
Four H really wants the building.
They really do.
I had to take something away from them.
But if we just don't own it to them, then they're.
But they're responsible probably.
They're responsible for the bills. But they could might be able to renegotiate because they're a nonprofit on the electricity side of it, and they probably don't need gas.
Well, the facility out the rodeo arena will eventually go away. The project center out there.
Yeah.
There would, you know, the bowls are already being gone, but they were so far behind on the new one that they knew they were going to have to use that one more time.
So they're using both those facilities to house projects to let them rid?
Yeah, they can't put anything in there. They won't have anything in there this year.
I thought neither.
The city's building the new project center.
Actually, the school is, it just utilizes the city. How that's going on and there's nothing getting done right now. Not even the horn, I think, is putting up buildings. I don't know, they're, they're on the way to school, along.
Yeah.
I mean, just a couple of houses. It's important that I'm reached where they are.
I was told last week.
They never have animals in it this year.
Something about 4H, they have body insurance.
Yeah, it would take quite a bit of money for the 4H stuff.
Maintain it after power, but.
But it would be a good use for them.
Oh, sure.
It may be ready by this kind of next year.
Still, I'm worried for the landlord for those.
They have a ton of those in the lawn.
Why?
Over a year.
They do them over there by the driveway.
Should we move the?
Yes. Okay. The next issue, and I'll ask Marcia to come up here because she's been working out in the jail on this. We're having an issue with the security control on the locks on the doors. There's that, Marcia.
Okay, what this is, I know you're all been central where they control all the different locks. We have a, one of the computers is gone. It's the backup computer, and we've got the other one slid into that place. But Jill Sanders requires us to have a backup computer because if that one goes out, we all go to manual lockdowns, and they have to go, it's not an override, you know, and that's a big, it's a big place. I did, I, this would do that in my office, and Carrie looked into it, and he said if everything he found, it really would be just cheaper to go ahead and just buy the one backup computer. Having said that, it's not, the computers not, it's what's high, it's the licenses and the operations and software in that computer.
So they're not transferable from the one that went down?
That's their.
Because it's also the original.
He said, yeah, that's all, every company is that way. He's checked into several, and they're all, that's.
Right, Terry, our software.
Exactly. And this one's all wired for this, and we haven't had any trouble. I just thought it was a little pricey. It's been a great system for us, it's worked well.
Our bill's pricey, the future's pricey.
Up here, no.
Just the licensing, the software.
How much?
Well, just to replace the one, it's going to run us $5,500 to replace both of them and kind of fix.
We got to get a bill to go.
Well, can I ask you a question, Marcia?
Sure.
It's kind of like when we were looking for, when is it only going to be found in this one place? Can we try and license somewhere else besides this one place?
No, we've looked, and that's the deal. That's the deal. They are already there, and all of their stuff is in.
So it's not the computer, the computers are the basic computers.
Yes. If we bring somebody new at the computer and their software a little cheaper, they're going to have to come in.
Right.
Our guys are going to pull all of their stuff.
That's right.
You're looking at $30,000 or $40,000 to start. You see what I'm saying? And our, and they service their stuff well, and it works well. So I think that really we'd just be kicking ourselves and, you know, it's 10 years old.
But we're paying our own amount for licenses?
It's, you buy the license.
So I guess we bought it initially.
We bought.
If you have your time, we already bought it, but we got to buy it again if we change.
It's per, it's per unit. And we got to have.
Until the other unit's going out the door, that whole unit.
Yeah, well, it's, it's gone. It's, it's gone. I mean, there's no, it doesn't work. And there's a few things we're going to fix in there. The, the environment itself, if you could have seen this computer, and this is a non-smoking facility, it was the dirtiest and most horrible. They called it apart, it was gummy. It's not a very clean environment, and it should be because of where it's at, that's the whole central. So we've got, me being the cleaning nut, that will all be a better environment for all the equipment in it, because it's what controls everything, is where our cameras.
Are we getting air filter in there somewhere?
Yes, we do, and there will be.
Do, do.
And we have a new, just the vacuuming, the floor, I think that that carpet needs to be pulled up, and they put sound boards up, and then that will keep the sound down like it needs to be and get rid of all that dirt.
Dust and dirt.
Because that, we can't keep it pulled out enough, I mean.
Well, what happens is, is your fan on your computer draws that dust to it.
Right, sure. I mean, it's cooling, that CPU is, it's a little vacuum cleaner.
They're only right to.
But it was the weirdest gummy. It's like, I know y'all seen places where there have been heavy smokers. None of these people smoke. This is a non-smoking facility. So it was kind of, it was kind of weird the way it all, so we.
They have a new commercial vacuum cleaner, they're going to vacuum it once a week.
Well, they're big enough to vacuum once a week.
We're going to have a little modified housekeeping policy, and everybody's on board with it with this bunch, whatever we can do to make it better. But this is something that we can't be written up over.
So with this new computer, are we going to use it and then use the one that uses it now?
What we're going to do, we're going to move it into the new spot and take the one we're using now and clean it up because it is, you know, it's the one that's working now, and it will be our backup. But, you know, guys, 10 years, jail's never 10 years old. So it's to be expected.
So what about total cost of what?
$5,500.
$50,000?
And general balance, that is $15,221, and we hate because if you have another repair, I mean, we could take even half of it out and take it out of half of it out of contingency.
Let's just take it out of contingency and save that $15,000 left because we have something else to do, you know, the tobacco.
And we will have something else to do, it's 10 years old. Things are breaking. We did, we had to replace one of the DVRs in the Bosch system. We had 16 cameras, they were watching, and they could see it, but there was no recording and hasn't been for a little while, so we got that.
Let me get this right, this involved remotely opening, closing, locking, and unlocking?
Yeah, you've been in there.
So if we have an emergency, we can unlock all cells one time?
Yep. Yes.
It's scary top not to be able to, too.
Yeah.
Don't get that sawed off. Management is the law.
This is just, yes, nothing else is on. Yeah, it controls all of that.
Well, that's sad, we need to be so, so why do you not want to take it out of jail?
Because you're running money there.
Well, it's $15,000.
$15,000?
It'll accumulate.
When you take $5,500 out of it.
Yeah, we'll take the $5,500 out of the jail development. I mean, it should come out there. If we need more money in there later, we can come out of contingency and put it back in.
We can do this now, out of contingency?
There's $15,000.
Yes, profit of, um, about $4,000.
If there's time to take it away from us.
Yeah.
Contingency, this there, this like expenses. Yeah. This is.
This is heavily unexpected.
So this is a repair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just tell us where to take it from, Marshall orders.
I've got a motion by Wiley and second by Pruitt, but I don't have anything else in there.
Are you good with that, Jim? Coming out of contingency?
Well, what about half and half? Take half of it out of the.
How do you want to do it?
I think that's what she wants to do.
This is like, what does, what does the auditor recommend?
Well.
Half and half.
I hate to replenish all of that development money because you never know if you're going to get a little bit, and if something.
We're getting $20,000 of repair, what we do.
We have that.
I mean, we're still at that same.
Yeah.
Problem.
I mean, if we run out of money, you're going to just want to build anything else.
Well, you've got the jail development funds, that's, that's all that those funds can be utilized for, it's for jails.
And that's.
We can utilize general funds for the jail or anything else.
Right. So that's, I mean, the other development's there.
We did largely go on our, on our funds through the, uh, we'd buy their.
Commissary.
Commissary funds. You can use, you can use it for washing machines, dryers, and water heaters.
And they just replaced washing machines and a dryer out there, but they got the good commercial.
They bought a water heater.
Yes, and we had, all the water heaters, I think now have gone out and been replaced, but look, they only lasted six years.
What is, all of those last?
Six years.
Six, 15?
And, you know, you're thinking about 24/7.
We're hitting two years.
Yeah, lots of things will be.
It's going to start falling apart.
The thing is, other things that Joe's building do is with the cameras repairs.
Yeah, and we do have a lot of issues with the cameras, but I mean, I guess we just.
We just got all those.
Not all of them, we just done a portion of them.
Yeah, it was skeleton.
So, I mean, Joe's building.
And those have already kind of really ended the ones that were done.
You'll rescind your motion.
Your motion.
See, we never made a motion except we can do whatever the auditor wants to do, whether she wants to take it all out or half and half, or whatever you think. You and the treasurer figure out.
Let's just pay the whole thing out there. I mean, that's what it would be used for.
Change it.
Yeah.
Change it off.
Just pay it all out. Just just pay it all out.
Something else breaks, there's no money, we'll go to.
That's going, at $5,500. $5,500. Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Wiley and a second by Commissioner Pruitt. Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Wiley, and a second, Commissioner Pruitt. To replace, um, jail computer locking system at fifty-five hundred dollars taken from the jail development fund.
To Argyle's security.
To Argyle's security. All in favor? Karen, five of them.
God, are you still here?
One more thing, this is good news.
It's getting better all the time.
Do you want me to just go there? We received a grant, um, for fourteen thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars. This is on some Motorola radios for the sheriff's department and we got the invoice and received the money last week, so.
What that development fund was, uh, a grant that was, I guess, a lot more of a blue doors?
Is that that one?
Uh, and it was. He's gotta step out just a minute. Does that name the team with line of made of?
I don't know. That gets.
Yeah, we've got ten o'clock made of. But it's like.
Anyway, we got that money, we decided to deal, the sheriff has, sheriff's office has the radios and all his way out here.
Hey, what about this radio tower?
Whenever we have a place to, this buggy got transferred, that grant got transferred.
Yeah, we've got thingies, I think, Marcia's put them on there.
The feeder was not twenty, it was priced to us, it was not twenty-five, it was a P twenty-five. The grant wouldn't pay for it, so we made the change, we were gonna have to eat that thing. So about. Yeah. So it was kind of re-recting the grant. Where are you gonna lose it? I'll just go back and land my land, I don't think, unless I figure it wouldn't like to say y'all were ready for it, get something out of it, foul us up and expect you don't do that, so.
When we want a tower, three hundred foot tower, could we sell it?
What?
I would say yes.
Is it, is it up or laying down?
It's, uh, these wind farms, one of their builders, the wind farm, they erect these towers. And I found out about one, two days after they'd cut the cables and let it fall, that they were trying to get somebody to come and get it, of course it cost them a lot of money to come and take it.
Okay, so it is wrecked and it may be.
It's wrecked, it just needed, yeah.
It may be disassembled.
So which is the one that's got her tits buttoned? I don't know if I stabbed them. Right, feet off. I don't eat, but there's probably gonna be another one available down toward Monday if county business.
Or, or the.
Another wind farm there?
Wind farm's here or there somewhere.
Down, down there toward, I think toward Monday. This one was at Harold.
Yeah, there's a, right there. Wow, wow.
It seems like we wasted money and equipment that.
Where's that other one?
They keep them together.
Like a bunch of.
You're presiding over.
The bunch of.
We're paying to take it off.
Got a dollar waiting on that, Eddie. Uh, have we addressed all that you need to address?
Yes. We're ready for bed, I'm in there.
Well, I'm talking about for the vouchers and all of this.
I probably think of something.
You're ready to jump over here at ten. Eleven, our ten o'clock.
He's gone again.
We can still conduct.
We got four there.
We can have some and y'all can start looking because I'm gonna have.
We're back at finish, alright.
Okay, we're back in session. We'll move down to item number eleven, uh, this opening of our road material, culvers, tires, tubes, fuel beds. Turn this over, we're eight minutes late.
I received, um, three bids and all of our own road material, I haven't received any for any of the other things that we talked about.
No, no tires, tubes or fuel beds received.
No contact, and said I didn't send one last year.
Contact. Well, what they did, they ended up sending us a.
Price. I haven't seen even a.
Whoopsie.
We received three rock bids, so that's what we're opening now. The first one is from Tex Rock Industries out of Breckenridge, Texas. Start looking at that.
Good.
Okay.
Wow, God, I really wanna know. This is bad.
Wow.
Is that something else from the city area? Is that Tex Rock? I don't know. What's the other one over there?
That's expensive, look at that one, it's rock.
That's it, that's his.
The second one is, um, Zach Burkin. And the third one is from Ingram concrete out of Breckenridge, Texas. I don't think I've read one in Breckenridge. You might as well start looking.
Dollar cheaper.
And I can go run copies of all three, I wanna say.
Sorry, I'm five to five.
Would that be the better?
Cause that's.
Me run copy, it won't take me five minutes to get your copies on.
You're not starting for him? Call her. Secret shit. Probably patch it the same though. You ever use that Breckenridge bid?
Me? All of them. Well, uh, being that, uh.
Not on bids.
Yes, yeah. On England? We're receiving the bids for tires, tubes, culvers, uh, fuel. So I'm gonna take it, the court's probably going to entertain state, uh, need to make a motion to that thing. Continue the purchase of those items as of in twenty sixteen. Yeah, uh, yeah. Definitely utilizing state contract for, at the quote of the day, uh, tires and tubes and, uh, culvers, this is sole source bid. They own their part of the country anyway.
Even if they sell the culvers, they follow the bid, didn't they?
Fuel on the price of the day, something like that.
That's what's going on.
Okay, state contract for tires and tubes. You might have one to do. State contract on tires and tubes.
Tire to stick, I like that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, being that, um, contact has the only source that I know of in the country anyway, uh, that, uh, we utilize, uh, contact culvers as our coal provider choice. We call it sole source bid, I like that motion. I guess we better vote on it, we did vote on it personally. All in favor? Okay, now, uh, Mr. Sapp, would you entertain a motion to purchase fuel on the best price of the day?
Best, the best price of the day? Take.
Best price of the day. All in favor?
Aye.
I understand. Okay, well, make note that we, uh, passed about four, four, zero, and yes, one abstention. Big, Mr. Fox. Four oh.
Zach Burkin, point number two is.
Topic, plan your gram.
Does the leaf pit no longer produce inflex space in one inch?
That is correct. Commercial grade, like Tex Dock only.
May have just longed out there.
I believe there should have been a letter in there that we are amenable to precinct two, well, West Texas, if we're selected as a little bit of, if that saves a taxpayer money.
Say that again.
I said there should be a letter in there saying that we are amenable to precinct two by West Texas limestone.
Oh, okay, you can go over there. Yeah, cause they're the same as, as you are.
Well, I make a motion that we go with Zach Burkin and the, um, letter that Marcia said with, with it, of England. Make motion to accept that.
That's Zach Burkin and West Texas.
No.
England.
West Texas limestone is West Texas limestone. Which is owned by.
Also owned by, yeah, yeah, owned by.
Which is the England one?
Yes. That will be West Texas limestone, West Texas limestone bid.
But they agreed to grow that.
West Texas limestone is owned by England.
Ingram, right, right.
We just happen to do the contract, right?
Is there any more age down there? It's not, it's not bid.
No, they currently do not, no.
Just have regular inflex base.
When we get one inch, we always go out to.
May have, may have.
They are kinda considering that, may have you have any interest in that. They have a customer too that has some interest, maybe in the future.
Okay.
So if you have interest, give us a call, we might do something there.
The amount of fines you guys are mixing with this one inch base, certainly made a good material.
I know it was lacking in fines for a minute and then y'all got fixed.
We kind of found the sweet spot.
Yeah, we did.
Have had several good comments, so.
It sure packs good.
It does, yeah.
Which when it packs good, it means it'll last longer.
Means we won't buy as much.
No way.
Oh, well.
How are planet, how's planet activity versus this time last year? About the same?
About the same, down low.
It depends on when you get there, whether we wait in line with seventeen other trucks or we get right in there.
Well, hopefully with us splitting the, that's the reason, the mail is doing mainly commercial traffic, same as the Tex Dock stuff, out of the other is keep truck traffic.
Yeah.
It's hard to ship eight, ten thousand tons a day, uh, once they're scaled, so. And produce it for that. We've got a motion by Commissioner Pruitt, second of Commissioner Sapp, to accept bid for road material law from Zach Burkin Company, uh, with an addendum to that, uh, for West Texas Lime, Ingram, um, in Breckenridge. Yeah, I'll take this pretty specifically for precinct two.
That's what the letter states.
Okay. Precinct two, precinct two.
We'll just charge the precinct two.
There you go. All in favor?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Jim. That wall gets looking better.
Better, yeah.
Covers up the ugly.
This is another guy.
We have item number eleven, intended to. Item number six, County Cruiser, financial. She has a break big one, I think.
We still have some money after.
We spent it, I told you.
The auditor got there, spending all the money.
Yeah, apparently we have eight hundred thousand in the, in the general, so we're starting to get the tax money in. It's really nice doing it with the ACH because we get money almost every day now, whenever she gets it done, she processes it since to me rather than waiting for a couple of weeks to get it. And so I have September, I gave you the details for the final of two thousand sixteen, which we, we had, I don't have the number of how much we moved out of the, of the money market, but we ended up, okay, we still had money left in the money market. And then I have October balanced and I'm working on November, so much going smoother than last year. No, I just, there wasn't any quirky mistakes. It's a, it's a, it's a detective game in there. So anyways, we are all right, we finally started getting our money in. We did have to move another two hundred thousand out of the money market in October to make the bills, so currently we have two hundred thousand in the money market.
Do you know what, um, what the level of taxes, current taxes we receive?
Percentage wise?
Yeah.
No, with the one man show, it's lucky to get proceeded in and payroll, annual reports, end of the year reports, W twos, no, don't have that number. I'll, I'll find it next time I come.
Okay, we have the financial portion. Good job.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll have the W twos by the first part, if I can sort it out.
Pruitt? To accept financial reports as presented. Treasurer, all in favor?
Yeah.
Here's five of them. Item number seven, citizen employee bonds. Okay. Christopher D. Barry, New York County Attorney, he's got an active and extended bond that, um, that'll carry him through two thousand eighteen. I think at such time that we try to make note, we'll. I think at such time that we try to make note, we'll give a two-year bond there if he runs and suspecting that he'd run again. Get that bond back on the right track. But it's, it's a good value bond right now. Also Travis Babcock, County Sheriff, he's got a bond that was executed in October the thirty-first, I guess it was. And it's been extended through two thousand twenty, so he's good shape. Nancy Thomas has got a new bond, a one hundred thousand dollar bond to the state and a fifty thousand dollar bond to the county. Both of these are required to be approved through the Commissioner's Court. And the state bond is, uh, the county judge is required to submit that original bond to the comptroller for their approval and to be positive with the comptroller. Tommy Martin has got a fifteen hundred dollar bond that's set by the Commissioner's Court, or that's how it's been set at that for a long time, the Commissioner's Court sets that bond. And it's paid to the governor and approved by the Commissioner's Court. Also Marcia Sumter, that's an assistant county auditor. This is a, a, a permissive requirement, or it's optional to the county auditor. She required a bond. We're gonna go ahead and note that. I don't know that it has to be, um, put through the Commissioner's Court, but we're gonna recognize it just like it was. Timmy Hall, a five thousand dollar bond, that's a new, a new bond. That's paid with the treasurer, uh, approved through the Commissioner's Court. James N. Hammond, Fort Belafonte caretaker, five thousand dollar bond. It's a new bond. It's, uh, to, to the county judge and approved by the Commissioner's Court.
Poor guy's wife.
I know, I just want to...
Yeah, we had one on her, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we do. I think we got those at different times.
Is that what it is?
Yes, ours wasn't.
Probably not do yet.
Uh, the Young County Clerk, this case, this is a scheduled bond. In other words, I think if I understand this right, that, uh, there's a five thousand dollar bond on each position. For effectively a twenty thousand dollar total combined bond. Is that right?
That's what she thought, yes.
And that one is approved, uh, will be required to be approved through the Commissioner's Court, so we want to get it on the record just like we do all the rest of them. And then we have two commissioners' bonds that are, um, to the county treasurer and approved by the county judge. And county judge is gonna approve those bonds, so. They need to be executed at or before the oaths given, taken, received. Anybody have any questions there on those?
Would move that we can approve these bonds on this list as presented?
We've got on... Chris Baron, Travis Babcock, Nancy Thomas, two bonds on Nancy Thomas. Tommy Martin, constable, three pages, constable, Marcia Sumter, assistant auditor, Timmy Hall, County Court Metronome. James N. Hammond, Fort Belafonte caretaker. Young County Clerk, position, scheduled bond, that is the bond of four positions there. We have a motion by Commissioner Seitz.
Check.
And second by Commissioner Wiley, to approve those bonds as presented, all in favor? Five, zero, and the bonds denied, that's a subject for approval of the county judge is, uh, just to put it on the record that the judge, county judge approves the bonds as presented. Go to item number eight. Let's discuss resolution number forty-eight, FY twenty seventeen, opposition to the RE search Texas. This has been going across the list, sir, both on the judge's list, sir, and clerk's list, sir. I questioned Kay about that, and she went, she went offer of resolution. This is pretty, a pretty generic resolution, um, almost the same as many of the counties in the way, or some meeting. You want to talk about that any? Kay?
What they're paying on the list, sir, is starting the first of this year, we started doing the E-file for the attorneys. OCA, which is down in Austin, is...
Office of Court Administration.
Is trying to use what the attorneys are submitting by E-file is open record for anybody, not letting them come through us. So it's just what they put on, it's not the complete file. And so the clerks are trying to get together to show where this shouldn't be open record unless you come through the clerk, so that you have the full picture and not just part.
Fully. So you want, you want to be able to screen it while they get hold of it?
Well, they're willing to sell it, but it's not a complete record.
So they're opening just another door strictly for the attorneys into this information?
And in the E-file was mainly just for the attorneys to be able to file with the clerks before they, they didn't have to send it or travel to that clerk.
Now, this is gonna be for perusal and retrieving information.
What it'll eventually do, if it goes into effect, it will reduce revenue that the district...
Sure, they'll go rallying the clerks.
It's a revenue, this moves revenue.
And what was the source of this?
From the county.
To the state?
The source being...
OCA?
OCA.
On interest.
Who, who wants to put it out there free?
Why did they want to? Pressure on the attorney?
I guess you'll have to ask. OCA.
So they didn't make any statement with this thing?
Well, it did. It had to do with the E-filing thing and what initially they were gonna keep those, um, files on record for thirty days.
Yeah, I saw that thirty days.
They've decided now they're just gonna stack them up and make them available free of charge.
For, in perpetuity?
Yeah, definitely like. So, you know, though it may be a slight revenue, revenue generator here for...
Well, I like our clerks not losing control of their information.
Yeah, and I think this is basically what it, what it is, is, uh, we will maintain control of the records that are filed in court house here. And with county and district, with the county and district clerk.
And it's like, hey, so two years old, they're only getting a snippet of it to the entire...
Well, but you also gotta think about these expunions and all these flukes, because it's after the fact. And if it's out there on this E-file, when an expulsion comes in and you close it in your file, it's not posted to the public. And it's against the law.
It's a false, it's a false.
Right, so that's another problem.
I mean, there may come, there may come a reason that this stuff is good, but as of right now, they haven't come up with that reason.
And then you got district court that seals records, and they might have sensitive files open that perhaps...
But it'll still be available through the inside.
See, that's, that's something they need to think about whenever they start to...
Unpending consequences?
You know, they're open the door, they need to be open.
It's, it's gonna be more volatile. I'm gonna say that the district clerks have got more records out there that are more volatile. Because of what they deal with upstairs on the...
That could be detrimental to somebody.
I don't have any courts or places, there's been quite a number that don't pass on this idea.
Judge, I think this motion should probably come into view since it's coming across here this...
Well, I'll, I'd certainly entertain an idea too, uh, too. Execute resolution number zero forty-eight, FY two thousand seventeen, in opposition of the, uh, search tax. In, in defense of our district and county clerks.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Seitz.
Pruitt got to say it.
Pruitt?
Pruitt, Seitz got to say it. Yep. That was completely, well, that was him.
Absolutely.
He, he, he motioned and he said...
Okay.
I'm all confused. Meanwhile, you get paid.
Okay, and bowling party. There's the fourth party.
Give me a copy of that, so I can send it out to our association. Item number nine, this is a order stated terms, Young County Court, which is pursuant to twenty-six point oh oh three of Texas Department of Code and art five, six, twenty-nine of Texas Constitution. Orders that the term, court, turn one be set, um, February, March, and April. Turn two, May, June, and July. Turn three, August, September, and October. Turn four, November, December, and January. I believe this is customary. I think we've issued this order every time that I can.
So this is not an alteration of any kind, as we're on previous thing?
No, it's, um, it's just a provision of the Constitution and the statutes that, that the Commissioner's Court is supposed to set.
Do we need to approve that order? Do we need to approve that order? How move that we approve that order?
Check.
Mr. Seitz, second of Mr. Wiley. To, um, establish terms of county court, I suppose criminal and civil, um, as indicated in sketch. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry five votes. Civil and grand. Item number ten, also you find in fact it, uh, the master agreement. Or hard inner civics, uh, verity voting system. I believe on the twelve, we entered a minute order and minutes that authorized late to execute that, um, master agreement. Whenever we got verification of the certified, Texas certification of the verity touchscreen electronic system. That happened on late, on the fifteenth, and on sixteenth, we had the order to execute. I did book of promotion wrapped by.
Move where you had to fight the agreement with the verity.
Were these numbers down here the bottom? She told us that they, she took out ten thousand dollars. Some book that she didn't have the lead.
This should be, um,
It's the agreement that we've already agreed.
Well, what I'm concerned is, she said she took out ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, well...
We need to know where that ten thousand. Make sure it did come out.
She took it out for the racks that they're selling?
No, it was something else, 'cause we never did put in for the racks, that's why we had to get from...
Oh, there was a few, there was a few items she thought we probably didn't need.
So what you're asking, have those been marked off discount?
Yes, that's what I'm concerned about. You see, it don't show here. Only thing it shows is a special discount of seventy-three thousand four forty-eight. But that's our special discount we got to get to early. But, uh, ten thousand dollar deal there, which we take care of that licensing fee for the first time. And we figured out whether or not we can take it out.
Well, how would we find that out?
I guess we didn't know from her whether or not it's been discounted or not.
So we need to not red fight today?
That's what I'm concerned. Ten thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars.
We're gonna finance this.
How about pursuant to the proper application of discounts in the country?
Yeah, what we got, a hundred and seventy-six, a hundred and seventy-five thousand we got on the old stuff?
What do we get from the other county?
Uh, a hundred and eighty thousand, I believe.
A hundred and eighty?
And then they still, I was a little bit, I think that was five thousand or if we put that other equipment to them, went to a hundred and eighty?
It was a hundred and seventy-five, and they bought some more stuff. And then we sold some to another county too, didn't we?
Okay, I can look back on what...
I don't remember if it was, uh, the brains on one, we had leftover or something that, that didn't make, we sold it to another county too.
So we gotta pay down and finance or contract?
Yeah, I would think. But that annual license deal, that's what comes up every year, ten thousand.
Yes, that twelve thousand dollars?
Ten thousand four eleven.
Wasn't it that she said they were gonna come and train or something for free?
She said they were.
They said they were gonna come, but right here they're charging us twenty thousand to come train.
Yeah, that's what it was. She said they would, because of the delay, they would throw that in, they would come and train.
There's something there, but it says including training, accepting testing, project management, and on-site support for the first collection. The verity voting system, additional services that require must be purchased separately. That's one of the things we argued over with the twenty thousand dollars coming out and saying, this is how it works.
Well, it's pretty well, of course, similar to that with that.
Yeah. I think that they're mainly the same machines, and they're just, you can either do it the same way we did on the old machines.
Touchscreen or...
Or you can do the touchscreen.
Everybody tried to touch those.
Yeah, they tried to touch. They got fingerprint along the road. Well, all of them, they, they still try to do like what they do on the... But these new ones, you can do that, or you can do it the old way.
Well, I don't think all of them, I think it's the same capings.
Just the handicap only.
Yeah, I think so, I think they, I think the same capings. Well, I understand that they were all...
Either or. Either or.
That may be. So the learning curve was just flat on.
Yeah, should be. Young people will touch it, old people will turn it.
Guess we need to figure out that ten thousand four eleven for that license.
And training?
Yeah. Do we have to ratify it right now or can we wait till we get their question answered?
He's in the process of trying to get that answer.
Yeah, 'cause they can't get their money till we do a contract.
Can we adjourn for ten minutes, Judge?
It's for year two thousand and seven.
Turn it right there off for ten minutes.
Ten minute break? Just take a ten minute break, we got a quorum here, we made it out. Jenny, Jenny's doing his asking, so here we go.
I paused you a little thing. I'll, I'll return.
We taking a break?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But, so American National's going to do the leasing on that, they talked about the board, we've done about work with this. So we need to get something together so we, 'cause they're gonna get their money right after they get in.
You got thirty days. The quarter of the deal here, it's just net thirty.
Okay.
So, everybody don't live long enough, so everybody will rest a little on.
They're gonna deserve a test.
Don't get me started. Their lack of planning, that's a constituent emergency.
We know when this is-
You go, your computers up, you're doing, everything's good. So they sent you the wrong stuff.
Yeah, that's just huge stuff that you're gonna-
Was that Ganda side of the family?
Like, didn't really want to tell us.
Keep, we know if you kept lingering or anything, kept opening up boxes. These swirly-
Are you talking about the skeleton or something?
So he goes, um, with Michaela.
So you got four in there? That's what we, I mean, on these two weeks, I'm like, 'cause I have one or two show up, like this Hall Rock. That's all we can do, you can't do that for one person.
Did they have the equipment somewhere?
What kind of work do you have? Any way in this time of year?
So they went and got it, and it's like you had to stand like that.
They literally got one or two.
But it's not-
I mean, not here, it's one other person.
Yeah, I can see.
Big one, is that one?
No, but I bet it's her.
Why you, why you didn't? Oh. I got you.
Here's the original. Oh, here's the original contract. Three, three, three thirty-five, seven. Three five five, three point six.
So they took it out?
Yeah.
Well, they took the guy, that's ten thousand.
What's three hundred thousand dollars?
I'll take it.
So Judge, are you gonna talk to the-
We spent, we spent a minimum increments of a hundred thousand.
Judge, well, it-
Really does ten dollars bills.
Are you gonna, Judge, are you gonna talk to Billy about the contract on, I mean, 'cause we're gonna do a contract on this? I guess we're gonna pay a certain amount down? And then contract lists the rest?
Are we paying down what we sold to?
I don't know, we, we much hit a payment.
No, we've got, we've got Edgar County's money.
Right.
And then there's about five thousand dollars more that we're gonna be due, because we have, I don't think we've earned the equipment. And I'm not sure if that's Edgar County or if that's-
Yeah, it's Edgar that I think is gonna send five thousand more. So are we gonna-
So is some stuff to another county?
Yeah, and I mean, I'll pull out, we'll signal that and see who sends that. Are we paying all that money down on the lease?
I expect so. Well, because our, what we talk about all the time is our-
Well, we may not all pay it until seventeen, 'cause we're gonna pay down and start with it. We won't all pay it till eighteen. 'Cause last year we bet you seven thirty-five. Yeah, we'll have to pay money tonight. We're not gonna make a payment eighteen because we're just starting the lease and doing the down payment, so maybe seventeen, so we'll owe it eighteen. We didn't know what that payment was gonna be.
Here's the original.
Judge, they turned your recorder on.
This one calls for three point six one nine six. Just a reversion of the lights and the wood.
I think that's all we got, I don't think we got the whole.
I know there's five thousand still out, but we have them, because we got delivered them.
Yes. I think I have all that in the email.
Verity hasn't been paid anything yet.
Sir?
I said Hart hasn't been paid anything.
We probably wouldn't have our equipment. Sometimes it's better to hold it hostage.
Yeah, but that's right there, it's not exactly Cambridge, right there at ten.
That's what?
About there at ten, that discount that she was talking about.
Close, ten?
Yeah.
Are the numbers on the contract great?
Yep. Their deal is a little add, their, their configuration is a little different to watch. What this is. Twenty thousand four, ten thousand four eleven, annual fee, that's still the same. I guess some of the stuff here, the middle, the verity, verity touch access.
We're financing this with American National Leasings? Is that correct? We're financing this with American National Leasings?
Yeah, finance the balance. Right, balance is gonna be a hundred and fifty, something like that.
'Cause our actual amount that we've collected, no, you said two thousand. Is that right, sir?
What's that?
Our, our actual amount that we've placed is a hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and-
Plus there's five thousand round.
So seventy-seven.
All right. Somebody up there, say it loud.
Mr. Wiley says, I look forward to the motion I made.
Sure. Just wanted to make sure.
Well, that's why we sat at this table, to make sure for the county.
Okay.
You wanna introduce to ratify the agreement with Hart Verity?
I'll say it.
Say it. Or ratification?
The twenty thousand's on the bank, you're talking twelve.
You're what?
The twenty thousand's on the bank, you're talking twelve.
Okay, all in favor? Five oh. Boring, I'd say boring bad weather or something that would prevent the ranch for them, which should happen here sometime middle of day on January the third.
Two.
Where they coming from? Where do they coming from?
Excuse me?
The two.
Two, that's, yeah.
First close Monday?
First is Sunday.
That's on Wednesday.
It's Tuesday.
No. Two, we're closed on Monday, which is the second.
New Year's Day is Sunday.
Second is Sunday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Thirty-third is Saturday.
Tuesday's Thursday. New Year's Day is always Saint Nick and Christmas is-
Coming the third?
If you come the second, they can be by here or something.
I think Lauren, I believe the last email I received from her, I think they had that schedule, it'll be about middle of the day.
On the third?
Maybe.
I made mine too.
Like the Thursday.
So we can have a whole week.
And she was unsure whether there was gonna be a load, load of equipment left or if we were gonna have to do that.
Or seven days.
I would think that we could load them all up, I think they're already loaded.
She'll be in it.
You got, anybody wanna do anything on the burn restriction?
Get some work here Friday.
I think they did, we had a few fires this weekend.
Yeah, we had, I had a fire on my place last week.
Did you really? What caused it?
Indians? Can't really figure that out. Burned all around the hunter's camp, right underneath there. Larry's horse eater, and it never squirts the thread, has he?
I think it probably had something to do with the hunters.
No, it, it, it didn't, it was, uh, gonna have something to do with the power line. The only thing, the only reasonable thing that we come up with, bird sitting on it, all of that one time.
Sure.
Eight o'clock, that's no other explainable reason for it.
What day was it?
Evening.
What day was it? 'Cause that wind was high enough Saturday then.
It was on Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday, I believe, about three o'clock in the afternoon. And I probably learned about, made a trip away. Made a lot of smoke, wind was almost neat, it was almost calm, but it was very, very slight rain.
So we're loving, you got called out on one on Turtle Hole Road?
It's right in front of Turtle Hole.
Right in front of Turtle Hole on the highway?
Yeah, right there across there where the red house is.
Yeah, that's a-
It was a control bar, and it got out of control. No, I wouldn't, Shannon's, it's-
That wasn't sunny, it was locked.
Red house.
No, it wasn't, there wasn't any rain this one, if you could come up with that. It didn't prove any breakers, or any switches blown.
Seem to be enough moisture on the ground though, that it didn't get crazy.
Well, the grass still, that's good, the green still, that grass, also, still, pretty green, so it's dark for slow.
I think we're good, at least till next meeting.
You adjourn?
I'll move in there.
Man, Dean didn't have nothing to do with that. On the last one of the year.
We've, uh, except for the court, we'll have a little ceremony in here on about two o'clock on Sunday.
Are you gonna do it in the county or the district?
Well, I said, we scheduled right here, I think it's speaking.
This will be our?
I believe there's, um, Southern County District, officials, I think, I don't think that this gentleman will be here, he's gonna be out there. Everybody, since that's sun, everybody'll have turkey clothes on, we run out of charge of that one. Everybody be full and ready to take a nap.
Take a nap.
Okay, we adjourn.
Everybody have a safe New Year's.